I actually left.
Oh my goodness. Dedication. Is this varsity?
No, it's a freshman. And he doesn't play.
No.
It was a great game.
You just go?
Yeah. Yes, I'm important.
All right. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. My laws and ordinances committee of the town council were taking up a couple of projects. One regarding establishing an affordable housing committee, another one revitalizing utilities. And so I drafted something that hopefully everybody has and some of it's available on screen. When we talk about it, I have to go to the purpose thing, scroll down. Yeah. I think that rather than start at the at the members and terms, we really have to focus on purpose because we really need to define the scope of what the committee would focus on. And so there's the sort of a broad scope, which is let's define a strategy for everything we do in a town, in the town regarding what I'll call subsidized housing. I'm suggesting that we use a narrower scope, that if we focus on 830G moratorium, that that will be more than enough to keep people within for possibly years. So what I'm saying here is the purpose to be twofold to increase the number of affordable houses units in a county. And of course, that's that's broad with sweeping, but also prevent private developers using state laws to recommend their canons, local planning zoning requirements. The two both goals in affordable housing commission to determine a plan to maintain a rolling moratorium under section 830G. And then I get specific on what the committee should actually do. I think it's important that that the committee gets somewhat specific with what scenarios they'd like the public to consider and react to. And to test them out for feasibility. So I'm suggesting that they put together some scenarios that would focus on the type of projects involved, whether they were utilized town property or required land acquisition, projected costs of not only development, but also of maintenance of each project. One of the lessons that we heard from some of the people, Scott Hobbs and others at the last meeting was depending on the style of the development that you pick, maintenance costs could be substantial. And some of them knew that we haven't really encountered in the past, especially if you do onesies and twosies as opposed to a large development. Also suggesting the scenarios would focus on the impact on town infrastructure, likely sources of funding and the impact on taxpayers, which I think is is key. So why don't I stop there and get some reaction as to whether people disagree on what the scope should be at our
No, not yet. You go ahead.
Okay.
You're on mute. I think I read it.
No? What? Oh.
Ask you on mute. Hillary, you need to unmute.
And Mike, can you hear me?
I think it's a first good crack. My impression after the last meeting, if we have a laundry list of items, if you have a reference suit, like a consultant coming in, I've got seventy-five things where and none of them get done. Right. My impression of everyone last week is like we need to just tackle a few things here. The purpose and the scenarios, these are my first crack. You know, is what the public probably wants from this committee. And I I feel pretty good with having your, where you're going. If this isn't the exact verbiage, it's it's pretty close. I feel like if you don't know these things, you don't really know where you are. You don't know if you have a viable strategy unless you dug in and specified some things. Christina?
Yeah, I just wanted to put forth the points of order. I think.
Right hand bottom. Click that little speaker there.
Yeah.
Now that's volume.
And then it's all.
Yeah, that's all the way. No, that's our volume.
That?
It's all the way.
Microphone?
Tom?
What is microphone? Microphone?
No, that's the end. Are they not hearing us off?
No, they can't hear us.
Yes, we can hear you.
They can hear us.
We can't hear them. Christina's motion.
So.
We started your speaker.
We had the owl on put up here today and the whole system went down. We lost IT for the afternoon.
You can't hear anybody online?
We're gonna.
Isn't that?
The system itself.
No, no. It's muted. I mean, it says the shark.
Yeah.
Try again. Christina?
Can you, can you hear me now? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I wanted to just bring up some points of order. Usually at the beginning of our meetings, we allow comments from the public, but I really want to avoid the interaction during our debates or questions of public intervening into the conversation. So Tom, I don't know how you want to handle it or Hillary, but I think it should be done at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, because this is all new stuff, I don't think there's any value in getting public comment at this point. We could do it at the end of the meeting if we chose.
Okay, but then there should be no interruptions by the public.
Right.
We don't have a big crowd here tonight.
Just jock.
There's a lot of people on too.
Oh, yeah. Well, so everybody should understand that we're going to wait until the end of the meeting to take comment. It's a working session of the of the committee and we want everybody's input, but we also have to get through this.
Are you going to disable chat or? It always disabled chat. It was just on this box. Yeah. No, you gotta go to the box. And then there's the three little dots over right there. Chat. No one? No one? Okay.
Okay. New setup. So if there's no more on that, oh, Hillary?
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm trying to pull this up on my phone too. Could you, do we define? Do we define affordable housing here? Or are we purposely leaving it?
I'm sorry, define what?
Affordable housing.
Uh, I don't, but what I have in mind is, and we can put it in the text, is that when we're working in the world of 830G, we have a definition.
Right. I'm just wondering if we want to make that clear or are we purposely leaving it vague so as to leave the the scope wider? Should they want to move? You know?
Not vague. So we can reflect that.
Yeah, I think we should define that some, you know, that we define affordable housing to the extent it's probably defined in the statute. And we can even just refer to the statute if we want that this is what we're, if this is what we're trying to address, that that's what we mean by it.
Right.
I have a question. But the second one, and I understand where again, it's like it's more, I understand where you're going with this and I'm trying to be really to say to prevent private developers using state laws, then we can local planning and zoning requirement. I have two sort of thoughts on that. One, rather than seeming aspirational, this is more like very defense, like it's more of the defense side. And is that even possible? Is that like a possible, a realistic?
We've done it before.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's, and that's and how are we gonna?
For you, by getting a moratorium.
So that, okay, so I, I, so it's just about employing moratoriums to be able to prevent that. I, I, I was thinking beyond moratorium.
Yeah, this is, this isn't strategic. This is very focused on an outcome, which is, which is to keep local control. And of course, at the same time, if you do these developments, you will in fact accomplish affordable housing.
Yeah, I guess I'm feeling, I feel better about the idea of saying retain local control and that could mean by developers and other sort of influence. I don't know. I think that's more of a positive way to say that.
Yeah.
It seems very, maybe we could work with private developers to get them, I don't know.
There is a scenario where you could someday see that you could work with private developers. So you don't want to exclude that.
Yeah, it just seemed like a very negative way to leadership, rather than a positive way, which is to maintain that local control. And also I think it encapsulates more options, right? Like more, more, I think it's more, I think it's a little bit rather than not too.
I agree. We can do that. Now.
I got these.
You got a subpoint?
No, meaning this would be underneath maintaining local control. One way of doing that would be to prevent, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Not really. What, what I'm, what I'm.
I'm not saying you'd include it here. I'm just saying it would include that point if you said trying to maintain local control, that would encapsulate that point and others.
Okay. I would revise the language a little bit.
I, I feel like.
Just because it, it comes off of a different.
It does.
We don't want it to come out that way. Yeah. Right, okay.
Um, Tom, it's Christina. I think that perhaps wording it to focus on maintaining local control is a better way to put it because we can't say we can't keep it the way it is because it implies that we're bypassing state law. And it's not the responsibility of the committee to stop them. That would be PNC or another body. I think that this body is more, has more to do with research deadlines, opportunities. Writing for grants or at least making sure that that is on the way. And also keeping a focus on any opportunities of land or anything. I think it has to be broad enough to give this committee real responsibilities to be at the forefront, to learn about the bills that are being passed, to understand the regulations and basically be a source, a resource for the town at large when issues come up.
Yes. As Mark was saying earlier, that if this feels narrow, it is purposely narrow because the the point is that if we're gonna, if we're gonna move the ball, I should, I should start a different way and maybe Kevin should, could comment. The, the target of achieving moratorium is, is a very complex and challenging target. There's nineteen ways it could go wrong. And, and to, hey, and to, so the, the idea is that, that actually in the initial period, that would be the focus. It's not lobbying. It's not, although we can report on, you know, I just have this, I just have this concept that most of the times I've been involved in discussions by 830G, two thirds of the discussion is taken out by people that talk about the latest new proposal in Hartford. And I don't want this committee to sit there and spend two thirds of its time talking about speculation on what the next thing might be going on in Hartford. Like, you know, there's a challenge here figuring out how do we, how do we get ready for the next moratorium? And, and I think, and testing out the feasibility and coming up with ways to develop public support. But as I say, unless we get specific, and this, this is sort of the Scott Hobbs theme, unless you get specific, you don't know if you're dealing with anything real. You know, you, you kind of have to work through, how would, how would a moratorium application work? We get the property. Where, where would we get the money? And, and not, not in, not in total specific. I mean, you don't have to go negotiate with the person, you know, with, with the source of fund, but you have to say the source of funds conceptually or, or, you know, is X type of property is Y. The, the, the number of units would be Z. The, you know, what that means in terms of the impact on taxpayers is, 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 is a function of that.
Yeah.
And so thi- this is designed to take away some of the lofty thinking about what a perfect world would look like and figure out how we protect local control.
Would, would something more specific be to ensure New Canaan meets moratorium requirements every four years? I mean, that's pretty specific.
That's, we can say it that way. We're, I use the term rolling moratorium, which is the same thing.
Right. But I'm saying like, if I wasn't even saying anything about control, that's even more specific, right? But it's not saying we need private, we need private developers. But if the law changes, that will be updated.
Of course.
So that's my only concern. So I think you're right, Tom, about the many things that come up in Hartford that you don't want it to be like a last year, but there are specific bills that have come up, like Ryan Bosne proposed is with one sixty-nine to treat 830G.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with this committee lobbying on 830G revisions. So I don't think that that's how the case goes because that's much more specific and much less frequent than bills that come up on housing and families to have school and things like that.
That's how I interpreted that point about lobbying, more of a relationship though, rather than getting the actual lobbying. So in other words, lobbying for New Canaan, not lobbying, you know, for these big law and goal. There's definitely a difference there between sort of a local bill versus, you know, getting all mucked up and all the, like I said, statutes law, debating that during meetings. I don't, I don't picture that as part of what this committee could do. But if there was somebody on, for living on the, on the committee that had a relationship with someone who didn't know for proper committee of their, have building that had a relationship and getting in on the back would be a point of of, you know, having some of that.
I think there was some discussion about New Canaan getting together to, I'm very good with lobbying to form a consortium, got it correct, to work on 830G. So lobbying, I don't want it precluded as only being in, you know, someone that already has a pre-existing relationship. Like if they go out and seek out relationships with representatives and talk about 830G, I think that can only help New Canaan and neighboring communities. So maybe lobbying is the sticking point, but somehow having some kind of a dialogue with Hartford that gives them feedback on New Canaan view, wanting 830G as well as Derry and Greenwich and all the other towns that are under the same kind of no, no place to go, but yet we have to, these updated, you know, this updated statute of law.
Hillary?
Wouldn't refer to without it. And these people tend to consider this very.
That's my favorite.
Hillary, you muted. I think we heard.
Sorry, I'm just, I was letting everybody talk. Could, could one, one substantive point in one procedural, if, when somebody talks, could you please say your name first so that I can note who's talking for minutes purposes? And secondly, I agree that we don't want to get this committee bogged down talking about, you know, fair share, things like that, that, you know, these sort of speculative possible legislations that might come down, that would take up all of their time. I think the most, there's got to be a way to draft this so that we pri- we prioritize what's most important. I suspect that once we once this committee gets comfortable with the moratorium process, that would be, you know, once they get established and once they get organized and, and they sort of get rolling with the moratorium process, they might have more time then to focus on statutory things, but it does seem to me like the priority, as Tom mentioned, would be maintaining the moratorium and finding the units that we need. I mean, I would think the first priority is maybe hiring a consultant or figuring out on their own what our housing stock is and what our need is. And, and going from there to get then the moratorium that we need. I mean, those are two big projects. And if we, if they end up organizing and then spending their time worrying about fair share and all of these proposals that come up year after year that really don't go anywhere, it's, it's gonna be, it, it just seems to me it'll be sort of a waste of time, but that's just my opinion.
I just want to address Hillary. Hillary, it's Kim Norton talking.
Thank you.
Um, so I just want to reiterate, I'm not talking about addressing fair share and things like that. I see that this whole committee is an iterative process. If something changes in Hartford with 830G, which is very possible, the committee has to be aware of that. And I don't think there's any problem with the committee reaching out to Hartford to try to change 830G. So I'm not talking about getting bogged down in all kinds of zoning bills that come up. I just think it's, it's part, part of the committee could be advocating for New Canaan forming a relationship with other local communities to address, whether it's outdated to address the one size fits all aspect of 830G.
Identify yourself.
Uh, Rita Tina speaking. I like the word advocate, it's better than lobbying. I think advocating and working, you know, collaboratively with surrounding towns hopefully affect, you know, to, to influence, I think makes sense. But yeah, lobbying is a word that could be taken out.
Lobbying, or, or, it's Mark. It's, it's well known that towns like New Canaan don't like the way 830G works throughout. And a lot of teams are look, why are we spending our time already seeing what would have pretty much well known up in Hartford?
Well, I, I, going back to what this group should be doing, I don't, again, now we're just creating the, throwing the umbrella out too wide and it's and it's, we're getting polluted. I, I, why do you purpose? That, that's not a good purpose.
So, Steve, Hillary, when we started the process and we polled some of the other towns, remember Fairfield and some of the other towns that had existing housing authorities, we, I think we began saying that the land, we don't want to have like this draft be like four pages long of like all the stuff. We want to keep it precise and, and not too broad. And I think the, the document gets that done. I mean, I think the way, the way it's worded, it keeps it brief. And I think we wanted to do more to keep it brief than expand it into, you know, telling this committee, they can form their own, every committee that we, that we get together has, can form their own rules and figure out how they're going to manage. So you want to set the committee up in a way that gives them the ability to expand or do, do their job without, you know, trying to man it.
Right. It's, Tom, I, I sort of think that if, if the purpose is 830G, it's sort of implicit that if, if there's some legislation I'll say, to me, I would be somewhat selective about how involved I got in day to day stuff. If, if there was something that really surfaced that was very promising, you know, I don't, I don't think we need good language to to, to enable the committee to pursue that. I would say that in all humility, I've been hearing about 830G for four years. And there, it hasn't budged one iota. I mean, it's gotten worse.
It's gotten worse. And Arnold Carr said it's not going to ever go away in my lifetime.
And, and the, the idea that Fairfield County towns are going to get together and if we can just have enough meetings and talk about it enough, we're going to influence what they do in Hartford big enough. It is such a waste of time. Having said that, this committee can't, doesn't need to prevent that. You know, it's not like your committee is going to say, oh my God, nobody should go to Hartford to lobby. I mean, we have people that are doing that already. Yeah.
That's, that's, that's where I'm, I agree. But this is zero six eight four zero, et cetera. I mean, this is about a campaign.
Right.
Apparently, because that's.
Exactly. And you kind of have to assume.
You have to represent it. Right. Right. And they're already, they didn't need our, it was decided important to say they're both highly educated about the topic. I'm not sure how you replace or duplicate it.
I, I just want to, I, I understand what Mark's saying, but I just don't want this committee to operate as silent. You know, then it's just New Canaan, it's entered, and it could change, the law could change, it could be tweaked or whatever. So I just want to make sure it's an iterative process because if we don't keep up with what's going on selectively, then we could be developing projects that are going to be, the law, the rules are going to change. And that's going to happen already, you know, whether it's fair or not. So I just want to make sure that we're in a dialogue with Hartford to that we know what the rules are.
Right. So that's new room for that.
So I have an idea. The things that were general, though, maybe not so, so specific, but maybe it encapsulates stuff. And this is just one sentence. I'm not sure if it's right then for you to say, though it's not really that, but we just say work to provide additional affordable housing in a manner that makes sense for New Canaan. And so then we can talk about the work, right? For working, it could be advocating. It could be working for moratoriums. I mean, that word can be breaking stuff. And it's also, and it's also positive. Like I feel like we're, we're pushing this in a very defensive tenor, like everyone, we said, we want to like, it's about like prevent, you know, developers and want to like advocate to change the law. And all that, that may be true, but it seems like a very defensive mode instead of a more aspirational mode that is just right for New Canaan. So it's, you know, work to provide additional affordable housing. We all agree that, that, that's a, that's a right statement, work to provide additional affordable housing, but in a manner that is appropriate or makes sense for New Canaan. And then you can be more, you know. I think that's a, Kim speaking, I think that's, I like the aspirational part, but I think it's a little bit too general because a board that makes sense for New Canaan doesn't necessarily mean 830G housing. So I like, you know, what Tom was, in fact, other comments that we got that it was specifically, the committee specifically focused on 830G. And I think at the end, Tom, you said, once you do that, you can go on to other, other things, but you kind of had replay at the end that says, once you meet these, uh, these goals, we'll go on to other kinds of housing. But I, I feel very comfortable that it's focused on moratoriums.
Agreed. Mark.
Hillary?
Yes.
What do you think?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree. I think that we should keep it positive. I think we should focus on getting the rolling moratorium. That's going to be central to our strategy. And I think we should, we should focus on that. And I, I think Kim is right. I mean, obviously, if, if, to the extent something, like I've said the whole, the whole time, we really need this committee to become our experts on 830G and the moratorium process and how the points work and all of that stuff and report back to us that we're in compliance. So to the extent there are changes, things like that to this, to the statute or the way that they calculate affordable housing points or whatever, they should be well aware of that.
Unless, unless, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. Smart. I, I think that's implied in, in, in order to maintain a rolling moratorium, you've got to understand what you're going to.
Right.
Hundred percent agree.
Just, I don't know if you, you were aware, Rita, but Krista Nielsen sent before the last very useful memo, very thorough, and she was going for the broader scope and she, but then she followed that up after the meeting saying, no, I agree that for the first period of time, maybe it is smarter to keep it narrow. And she's like one of the experts on planning and zoning is that he basically wrote the 830G report.
Okay, so back to the original, then. You said work to provide additional affordable housing. And then that's the first point. And then the second point, you part that, part right in.
Well, I tried to say that already in under purpose. Purpose twofold, we will increase the number of affordable housing units in Canaan. But one of the comments was define affordable. And here I'm talking about 830G definition. But if you're okay with that, I mean, we can stress the positive. Yes, we're trying to build affordable housing units, yes. Yeah. But at the same time, we're trying to do it in the context, it'll retain local zoning.
Right, and I, and I.
I, I just, I, I, I I don't have a problem with being very defensive. I don't need it to be.
Because we're under the gun.
I think what the town wants is exactly what town quit in purpose. And I think a, a offensive, or making it nice is not really what this town wants. So I'm, my perception of what this town wants is more in line with a firmer, firmer, the way, it's just firmer language.
You know, ensuring that New Canaan meets moratorium requirements.
Achieve. I just think that if you got into a legal issue where, you know, somebody is trying to wedge themselves into the town and they, they say, look at this, look at the language, you're quite in the purple house. wedge themselves into the town and they, they say, look at this, look at the language, you're quite in the affordable housing, this is very um insidious. And we don't want to have that legal hanging out there that says, let's just read this.
Well, I thought that this was an inception we're removing to. No, but to achieve the goals of where the town is, I just want to make it very, very straightforward. Where, where I think the language you were using.
Well, that was just, I was just trying to, you know, I was just going over.
Like, to provide additional, then you have to define what's additional.
The reason I'm saying that is because it could include, you know, more efficacy, but if, if that's, if we, if we all agree that we want to be, I'm fine with going more specific to those two points. And not, not keep, but I, you know, not, not saying we shouldn't do that, I think we should. But I'm, I'm okay with going more specific.
Oh, you're still letting people in?
No, no, we have two people again, there's.
How, how would I know?
Two participants up at the top have raised hands.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It's either Hillary.
But they're going to ask.
Oh, that, that, her hand is cut off.
So that we no longer have them?
Hillary's.
No.
I'm not taking comments from.
Hi. Hey, guys. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, just quickly, I love the robust discussion, but the sound that we're getting is very hard to hear from the room. And it's particularly hard when more than one person is speaking at the same time. Um, so if you guys could just try to speak slowly and clearly and um, one at a time, it would, I, because I, I just completely missed that whole conversation. I have no idea what you're talking about. Um, so I, just a note, because it's the, the acoustics in that room are not great when you're not in the room.
Hillary?
Yeah.
Just, just be mindful that we're recording this, so your notes don't have to be.
No, I understand, but if, if the sound reflects what, what I'm hearing in that, I won't be able to hear that entire conversation you guys just had. Recording or not. So just be mindful of that.
Agreed. Tom, I have a question. Um, while everybody's talking, it, it's become more convoluted because I'm not sure the language you want to replace those, the twofold uh, mission statements. And I just want to put something forth, forward and have people comment on it, but it would be more fruitful if um, whoever wants to recommend something constructs it in a sentence and then presents it for discussion. So I'll submit this to you. Um, on the first um, on the A part of the uh, twofold idea is to work towards increasing the town's ownership and development of affordable units in New Canaan. I think that the way you have it written, it implies that we're just trying to increase the number of units, but we really want to increase New Canaan's ownership of buildings, not just anybody. So I think that has to be clarified.
Why would we care who owns the building if we get the credit?
Because if a developer develops an affordable housing unit, it's only for forty years. If the town does it, it's in perpetuity. So forty years down the line, we're going to be back with more housing that comes off the rolls as affordable housing. And we have to build more.
First of all, town does not own, housing, doesn't, doesn't.
I didn't understand you, Kevin.
The town of New Canaan doesn't own any housing, the housing authority.
Okay, okay, so that the housing authority owns instead of New Canaan.
I'm sorry, I would argue that if you're talking about the difference between forty years and perpetuity.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't assign a tremendous distinction between those two things. Um, I think if we can, if we can achieve a moratorium, it's going to be, I mean, the next one, I guess, maybe do, doable, but the one after that is a huge challenge. And I think we need to take our units where we can get them.
No, I disagree. I, I don't think that this committee is being put together for the benefit of, of developers. I think we're putting this in place to protect New Canaan.
Absolutely, I agree.
Can I make a suggestion? I, I'm not negotiable. Could you, you maybe reject it and move on to the other parts of the ordinance? I mean, it, it seems like we're all confused about what that. You're being a new writer.
Well, to be specific, we're going to, all I've committed to do is to take the edge off of the um, prevent private developers using state law to circumvent. We've changed that language.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm not sure we would read on in either chamber. I think that's all that we agree to.
Can I make one suggestion? This is Kim talking. And from affordable, can you put section eight of affordable housing units?
It's, section eight is different than affordable housing.
And eight thirty G affordable housing units?
We're going to define it, we're going to define affordable by reference to eight thirty G. That's the other change we agreed to.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Let's um, move ahead to the public education. Uh, let me just read it real quick. Affordable housing committee shall conduct community forums to provide information on the operation of eight thirty G and the likelihood of the provision being changed by legislation. So I'm not ignoring updates on Hartford. Updates on planned or pending applications for moratorium. Updates on planned and or pending affordable housing developments. Pros and cons of possible locations and types or types of locations for future affording affordable housing developments. I got a comment back from uh, Krista, she's saying, uh, Nielsen is saying, um, she doesn't disagree with these, but she pointed out that public disclosure is, is, you know, a lot of information. And we, we want to be sure we're not doing something that would maybe defeat the purpose of the exercise by forcing, I don't know, I don't want to use those words, but too much disclosure. But I haven't really wrapped my head around what her point is on, on that. But I think she's just saying the reality is, oh, boy, if we talk to the public a lot, you know, we wouldn't be able to operate as efficiently as a hedge fund or, you know, private corporation, but I'm not sure there's much that we can do about that.
Isn't the whole committee subject to FOIA? I mean, it's all going to be, unless you go into executive session. So that, that seems like that's inherent in being a cage for the town of Canaan.
Yeah, I think it's. Uh, uh, the more, the more we require in terms of public education, the more specific we get, the, the more FOIA issues we're going to have. But uh, but she didn't suggest any language change. I just want to make you guys aware of that in case you did have a thought on that.
There's a byproduct of every decision in government. I don't, and me, again, focusing on what's on paper here, I'd like and believe that the committee should be addressing these things. And if it's in a meeting like this and no one's listening, it, it, it's, you're hitting on the main points. I mean, these are the issues. If you've just moved to this town and you don't understand a thing about it, those were topics, there's, those were in one, two, three, four, we covered pretty much what you needed to know.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree. This is Rita speaking. I'm, I'm in favor of more transparency, you know, less, I think it's important. One question I have on the first one is, and I'm just maybe I'm trying to understand it. I get the operation of eight thirty G. You want to be able to make sure that folks know about it and how it operates. Um, the likelihood of the provision being changed by, uh, I don't, can you explain what that, what that means?
Well.
Like, what are we communicating?
Well, for instance, if we have, if we were to have a forum tomorrow, we would summarize um, Ryan's uh, Fazio discussions or somebody was talking about, I guess, I guess, maybe it was um, uh, one of, one of the House representatives. But they're talking about discussions with, with Governor Lamont about what his views on, are on how that should be changed. That context, I think, should be part of a public forum to, to give an update on the likelihood that things like that would actually change eight thirty G. Um, if, if there are different words, I'm, you know, I'm open to that.
So they, so what you're saying, Tom, that's Steve, is if, if New Canaan were holding a forum, the, the affordable housing committee could be the host. It's the idea.
Well, I'm, I'm saying the Affordable Housing Committee should be obligated to hold public forums. And each time they do, if there's relevant updates on what's going on in Hartford, we can report on it.
So I like that, the relevant update. I, I guess I'm just trying to understand this particular, the likelihood of like, are we, are we interpreting what may or may not happen with legislation or what we think. We really don't think this can change anything.
Well, when we teach that, great. Something like major trends, you tell me.
Yeah, that's, that's all. I, I didn't know if there was something behind that.
Okay, just trying to keep it narrow.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Kim. So they're going to hold meetings and host forums or the meetings themselves want to be providing education? Like, why make extra work for them? Are we expecting there to be public forums or is it just the meeting and the process will be much more transparent? Is that?
Those meetings are, are the public forum.
Okay, that's what I.
But, but in the case of, say, say you got all your Ryan Fazio, you got all your representative together and you wanted to have a more of a town life forum, this would be a good place for them to host that. Because if you look at the, if you look at the committee members at, you know, on this committee, you're taking from all different departments and it's, it's the perfect host committee for uh, an event like that. And you have one of everybody there, so.
I understand that.
So what I revise is to not make it a separate forum, but make it clear that it's, it's a function of the committee.
Yeah, they can decide that.
Right.
And a resource, there are resources for the community.
Right. And some people have, um, dash five, some people have suggested um, we ought to go ahead and create a, a fund. And I just think that's premature. I think that's something the committee can work on. Because I think the committee needs to define what you're funding for before you start, for instance, going to the board of finance and saying, I need six million dollars, you know. Um, and then finally, um, there's already a, a report required every five years under eight thirty J. And uh, that was done by planning zoning, basically in the planner, planner, and, and they were, they're all requesting that this committee be responsible for it.
You'd be responsible for it?
Yeah. Uh, which is, but it's five years, it's once every five years. Um, uh, you know, I didn't see, saying no to that request. Um, a lot of these things are going to come down to staffing. And um, we can't solve the staffing things in this document, but I would, I would definitely urge certainly some beefing up of, of the planning uh, capacity uh, so that, so that these things can be done. It could be the same paid staff people would work on this report as did the last one. It's just that.
See, you're responsible for being hired a consultant to actually do it. Is that right?
Could I say something? Yeah. You have a five member uh, housing authority. The only thing they function on is affordable housing, which is that mine. They have had a consultant, they've been current in the past ten, twelve, fourteen years on the property. He was paid very well out of the, we paid out of the four thousand trust fund. So the expertise rhythm is there in the current, he's no longer affiliated with us because he's moving out. Um, but that, his expertise was really the, the engine behind having a market. Um, Chuck Roman before Scott Hops was genius behind this strategy. Um, so the house, the insurance is the number one person. You need, you know, Scott's going to stay in the role. But I would just emphasize that the expertise in their party, not, not the insurance, the town planner chef.
Oh, good, good, good.
Can I ask a question?
Steve Plon, who, what you know, is consulting with us separately, at the pretty much, um, wants so far to the G.
Wants what?
Wants so far to the G. So it's kind of a, people in the field, it's hard to expect to find people in the land field who want to touch eight thirty G.
Nice question. How, how's the funding developed to pay the, because I was wondering if we should put every budget, a budget to this.
Affordable housing cost fee.
Right.
Charges fee on every development expense.
Right.
Every, every, every company. Um, so about two or four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Is in charge over the past decade. So we, I think, for, I believe, we've got to, of your.
So I guess the question is, do we want the funding for this community to continue to follow that fund? Would we give them a budget for experts and consultants and, I mean, I don't know, that's just something I'm just curious.
I thought you need an expert and they would probably.
Oh, yeah.
If you can't, if you can't part time, you need that sure.
Definitely, but for the committee to remain independent from the housing.
Are you an expert? Oh, that, that, that is, it's working.
Um, this is Kim. So for the committee to remain independent from the housing authority, would it be helpful for them to have their own budget? And go in front of the first selected and saying, you know, we would like a certain amount of money to do X, Y, or Z. What else do you think?
Something, so you got five hundred of the housing authority, or their job to do some of the things you do it, you can't put that out of business. They're actually a state agency, you appoint their members, and that, 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 they have a job to do. Right, so you kind of don't want to duplicate their job. Because they have the number one responsibility to afford housing in town of Canaan.
That's a state setting.
Under their, under their term. They also have the responsibility for, for moderate and low income senior housing. They never focused on that at all. And we're forced down there. So, you know, the, the only job they've done in the past twelve years is to afford a house.
And I, I'm aware that there are, which might call jurisdictional questions. Um, I, I was hoping to do something that everybody would support. Um, and that, and that the specifics of the relationships between the bodies could be worked out, you know, after this is set up. Um, I think uh, I think the people on the, Hank, is that the, is that the acronym for it? Uh, if Scott's any indication, they would say, somebody's got to help us because if you expect us to deliver rolling moratorium, we just don't have the, we don't.
No, that's why I emphasized before, the day of the current, a professional expert in A to support that. He was the brains behind the, the, the strategy.
But I think what the town needs is not just expertise, certainly expertise, but also resources. And, you know, I think that's part of the impetus for this. You know, can we figure out a way to, you know, more money and, and or more property? And, and that's not something that Hank, I think, is.
They don't have solutions for other than profits they make on their, on their development.
So, so can we give them a budget and?
Let's start. Christina?
Yes, I just wanted to say, in my research, I came across the Town of Durham Affordable Housing Implementation Committee. And I think it's a wonderful example. It's very well done and we should refer to it and see if we can borrow and, and adapt some of their points to ours because it's much broader and it addresses many of the concerns that everybody has raised. I'm in the process right now of um, texting it to everybody so you can pull it up on your phones.
Thank you. Maria?
You're on you.
Yep, I just wanted to go back to the comment about um, conduct community forums. I thought that phrase should just come out. The Affordable Housing Committee shall provide information on.
Right, agree.
Agree. I didn't know if that was said, but I, I just wanted to say that.
Gotcha.
And Tom, you remember um, both uh, in my notes from the last meeting, Krista and Dan Radman both advocated for some sort of funding, some sort of extra help, you know, from planning zoning perspective, they were saying, listen, this needs to have, you know.
In terms of budget or?
Well, yeah.
Or, or, no, just.
Of, you know.
You know, the the folks who are gonna be there, you know, doing the work, you've got to figure that you're gonna have some expenses associated. So make sure you buy the ability to do that. Now, that's not the, that's not this housing. Committee itself, but it's it's the board of finance and town council who will try to, you know, answer that piece of it. You know, they they stretch that significantly than you. So you know, that's something that we'll be talking about as sure as we go through all.
Mark, to kind of put your point and Kevin's point together, we don't have an expert anymore.
Right.
If this committee help drive. Or maybe put it in 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 one of the purposes, you can find someone to help us. You know, outside of the board of finance and the town council, they're saying, hey, we need someone. This committee could actually. Let's just say we take consultants.
Yeah, we can and 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 come up with, should come up with a budget, present it to the town council. Yes, one of one of the things that we always, when we can see it happen, when we form one of these committees. You know, I I try not to think about names of people, right? Because this is something that is is five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty years down the road. This is the beginning of it and you want to give it some good roots to grow. But you know, you don't want to constrain anybody, but we don't, you can't, you gotta think of it as this sort of bigger picture, you know, this is. Many years of this committee function and as we have other committees that have functioned for a long time, this is the beginning of of that. You know, and at that point, Kevin, I don't think I have a point. He's interested in saying, oh, the volunteer. You got expertise in ten years. Nice. And that's great. Our time to death, you can't find a better expert on finance. People bank, um, and he's someone who. It's unique, a unique resource in town. You wouldn't want to not give up that research. You can't replace that. Town has that expertise to want to volunteer. He has the burden of the P and C, thankfully saving town. But so I would just always say, I am thinking about the detail. We have some expertise. I don't want to see John go away however you want his knowledge, so.
You gotta put a hug in that guy.
Is art still on planning and zoning?
Still.
So he would.
They retired, he had more time. And to be consulting the device.
So speaking of, I know I'm jumping around. This is Kim, the composition of the committee. I was looking at some of the other committees, that there's alternates. So I would hate to see if someone's out sick or on vacation that the committee would slow down because some members were. You know, with this expertise, you're not present. So I was gonna suggest that we add really alternates to the proposition committee. And I was also gonna suggest that we add a few more non-expert residents. Um, I know you don't want to keep the committee small on top, but really bringing it up to to five town residents. Who've never been on any committee before, or maybe, you know, so brand new, fresh, new ideas.
My, I have no trouble going from seven to nine or whatever the numbers that that doesn't bother me. I've thought too much about the alternate thing, but I think there are reasons why planning and zoning has alternates because they they dispose. They make legal decisions. On a regular basis, they cannot not have a vote on a particular night. So it's it's sort of a little bit similar to the board. But anyway, the, um, the the other point about, um. Designating the profile of the people on the committee, I just don't want to go there. I don't know where I see that as a Pandora's box. I never get out of that. Cause there are people that have, there are a couple of people who've said it should be a cross section by race and ethnicity and. You know, where people live, different districts of the town. You can have a committee of one hundred fifty people if you fulfill every quota you have. I I'm just reluctant to, I I think I trust, I I trust the board of selectmen to come up with a different group, but with the priority being. The potential proactivity of the members, how they can serve the town. Go ahead, sorry.
Um, this is Kim. So one of the ways to address that is to have people be able to self nominate. And that, you know, go to the first selectmen that we've done this.
Anyone who comes in with expertise, they they got to have expertise. We don't want people to just lay people into the state.
Right.
On ten years. If you don't have value, we don't want them.
But it is true that anyone can self nominate, right? So it means it makes the process more open.
Oh, absolutely.
So we did, uh, created, um, so could we say something to be effective, instead of saying you will have the one person that's an expert? Can we say, would we like for the people to have experience set down and some examples and experience?
The board of selectmen will do that in terms of how we populate this to make sure we have. That as we were more advanced, that we do, you know. You try to have different categories checked off. Well, it is important to, the 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 line there about three other town residents who not there as a bodies. We heard many times during our open session last time we met that the people want transparency, they want to build, you know, the ability to raise your hands and say, hey, I want to serve on this. And you need to have that openness.
If he's not committal.
But you know, you want that, as Kim said, you want that fresh perspective, or you need that fresh perspective. You can pull somebody in that's. Hasn't served in the government, they're gonna have all kinds of different ideas of, you know, as long as it's. Someone with really good intentions and that lives in town and wants to really work at this, you know. It could be, you you'd get surprised. There could be somebody out there that, you know, really, you know, has a lot of value.
Well, that that's well taken, but is anybody proposing that we actually put in the language?
No, no, no.
That we have non-experts.
I think statistically, if you change it from from three to five, you cast a wider net to get that fresh perspective.
And the other, right.
Well, I kind of like this. I kind of like this. Specificity of having someone who hasn't been on another, I don't know. I guess, if if you truly want priorities, I mean, the first. Freshness of ideas, that's gonna be a bad thing to say, but we should have one person that hasn't. That if that's a priority.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, you know, you just can't keep firing this thoroughly on a board, right?
That that gets to a, you know, there there's a. Looks like, no. You 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 want, definitely want people for who 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 aren't. You want the fresh blood, the fresh talent. You don't want board membership to keep you away from talented people. Absolutely. But what if we get, um, multiple people from planning and zoning and who who want to, you know, want to be involved?
Uh, I mean, that that would be a high class problem to have, but you know, if somebody wants to, I mean, planning is only, those guys have done so much time as it is. I I would be amazed that you have more people from P and C saying, hey, I want to attend a couple more meetings a month, but. I don't know, but that's that's my guess. Are you saying, how would you select between three people or?
No, no, no.
Some of the balance, the party balance, those some of that, you know.
I'm not talking about how you select. I'm just, I'm just. I'm just asking whether we should limit the P and C involvement to one person. And.
That's specific board, you're saying.
Yeah, that's specific board, having only one person. On the other hand.
Well, that's why an alternate.
People can participate all they want to. They don't necessarily have to be voting members to. And making contribution.
True.
Was there someone?
No, I'm just going back to the Durham. Affordable Housing Implementation Committee and bylaws. And I think we can all read it and. And get an example of how effective the committee can be if we word it properly.
Fisher Cutby, you want to tell us what it is? Well, I have it right here. Their constitution is two co-chairs, six large representatives. Three residents of Durham Housing Authority. Five people representing the following categories. One resident of affordable housing, two formerly homeless individual, three, a member. In real estate development, or a member with expertise in housing finance, five representative. Um, from the citizens advisory committee. I keep, I just. It's still Mark, I think, the way that we, other committees. We just continue on, I mean, the, the board of selectmen are gonna come up with candidates. Again, I I don't, I I think the purpose is more important than the number of people.
So we need to make decisions. It's not that hard. So do we raise to three to five?
I firstly, I.
You mean, I I don't know, five raised three to five?
Three, three town. Instead of saying three other town residents, say five other town residents, which I think is where Kim was coming.
So there's a total of nine. So.
Are they up to?
I think it's a, I think it's.
Three is enough?
I I think three is enough. I think it's. So they four, so seven people. You know, again, people have to be very willing to do this.
Anybody else?
I mean, I, this is Kim. I think people are pretty passionate about this. I don't think you can have trouble getting five. If you get five, we'll bring it up to nine. So when you take a vote. It, uh, you know, there's not gonna be a tie most likely, right? Because it's the map involved in that, I think it, it just. Puts more of an emphasis on fresh new ideas. If you do four and four, then then there's gonna be a tie. So that's the only reason I'm going up to five.
Yeah, it should be not enough.
Right.
And, yeah. If we could find, we could find people that want to serve great.
Well, we can always revise this, right?
I think we're getting into the week.
I I am gonna suggest that. That there was an intriguing notion that. Not only should first elect would be ex officio, but another board of selectmen member could also be ex officio. The more I think about that, the more I think it it's problematic for a couple of reasons. One is, I didn't realize until today that ex officio. Is a voting member. And that's what the term means.
No.
And that's one of the things that means virtually your office, you know. So exactly, but it's.
Um, I have an ex officio on every board commission by statute, right? And then in statute, so whether you say it or not, sometimes this charter says. First likely shall be, um, ex officio and shall be a fact, for example. And if you believe it, it's a lie, right? Um, voting, but but we used to, planning is only, we changed the charter last time. And the first law, breaking ties and planning is only.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense to.
Well, be that as it may, my point here is, is, um. Well, the common use, you're talking about first selectmen and you have a context that's established, want to change it, don't want to change any of that. It would be new if we move toward having a second ex officio member. But that's, we haven't seen it anywhere. The the common usage of the term implies voting as opposed to non-voting. And I I just don't want to get into that.
I don't, I don't agree with that. That's my experience, my virtue of your office.
No, you're right.
By virtue of my office.
Okay, but do you agree with my point that we that we should only have one?
Could you word it such that you'd say, uh, a member of the board of selectmen would serve as ex, or however you want to word it. Your act, the first like an exhibition, not a lot, but it would give you an option if. The first like and had excellent selection and they said, okay, listen, I don't have time to focus my attention on it. I want you. To do it and assign that select, you know, select person to do it, you know, it's.
That's interesting.
One of my issues, one of my issues, we're talking about one, two, three, four, five bodies, town bodies.
Right.
So you could have this conversation about every one of them, right? If if, you know, how many ex offici, how many members do you get from town council? What if there's someone else who wants to participate?
Right.
What about planning and zoning, what about board of finance? You know, I just.
The only bodies we have that have town council, board of finance, or building committees. And that's the reason they're, you know, top of the department on SAKs.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I mean, you you have the right to have liaison or or your. Your particular committee is overseeing that, having the actual members. I I don't see the value in that, myself.
I think the driver is we want of the expertise. So you start with.
And 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 the ability to talk about funding mechanisms, you know, because. You can't fund this just through the board of selectmen or finance. It has to go through the council. So. What the person intimate on the council would be the one advocating for the council that we need to do this and we need to fund this. So. Uh, that's why I thought it would be logical to have a town council person on to to, you know, you're basically reporting back. Uh, monthly basis, uh, what's going on.
This is Kim. I'd like to, um, just, I bet, I understand what you're saying, Steve, but I I, the other committees are set up that we do have liaisons to town council. Like health and human services. We know the budget and then we are able to report back to county also. So I kind of agree with Kevin. That those people shouldn't actually be in the committee, that they should be a liaison to the committee. And then, um, my other comment is in the other ordinances, you can say that the selectman had voting power. You can, you can either. Say they're ex officio and they have voting power, or they just. I think it's like no voting power. Is that correct?
This kind of committee should. I mean, so I'm a long favor of having these. You got the people, smart people to work that deep for private, kids are poking like this. And this, the guidance came from, you know, originally, we came to this giant, it was the one who put it on page the first time. But I, you know, I can see your point about not having a council person on there. You know, that, we, you know, the workload, we all know. We do. And to say that that council, for that specific council person is gonna be. Be even this as well as everything else that goes on in council is a lot. I mean, that that person would. For the next couple of years, that would be heavy load for somebody.
You can say the same thing about, uh, P and C for that matter.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're right. You're right.
Or the board of finance. So I think if there's interest.
The reason we got to this point was because of the importance of this particular issue and taking. A member from each one of the bodies to get this in going. That's really, that's, that's how we arrived. So.
We can have it time limited. It's three months of the committee to get it started since it's a brand new committee and then they.
Well, yeah, you're gonna turn that a little off. So every one of these has, you know, a year or two or three or whatever the rolling. Of the cadences. But what we're doing now is we're actually putting it in writing to say for the rest of time.
Yeah.
So that's. That's why we have these meetings to talk about what else.
Well, then we could change the, the, you can make it, um, seven people and have all these other people be liaisons. Because they could be smaller. Instead of nine people, it could be seven of the all over the time.
When you're a liaison, you're basically listening to the meetings, but you're not voting or participating. This committee requires work, research. And diligence. So I don't think the role of liaison would benefit the committee. I mean, liaisons are always welcome to come to the committee meetings. But I think you need people appointed that will take on the responsibility.
Yeah, I I agree with Christina. I think that this issue in particular is so critical to the town. That it really makes sense to have a town council person be a voting member of this committee. I think that it touches, I mean, just, just looking back at the first meeting that we had with everybody in the same room, I think. In all the years that I've followed town meetings, that was probably one of the more productive meetings I've ever experienced is having. A person from board of finance, a person from planning and zoning, town council members, everybody sort of in person from the housing authority. Everybody's sort of sharing their best ideas about this, the formation of this committee, I thought was incredibly productive. And I think if you start taking that out and and you know, you may give this person less authority, this person that. I I just think. It 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 behooves us to create a committee where everybody who has. Uh, who has a leadership position also has a stake in this. I mean, I think it's really important to represent. You know, we are elected, we are, we would be the one. Voting member of the team that is, that is accountable to our residents that's elected. And I think that that's meaningful. And I think that we should have a, a. And I think that we should have a a place on this committee and have that, the only question is, how does that fit with the um. The term limits that are on here, so say like. Somebody who's up for election in two years gets appointed to this committee, and it's for four-year terms or whatever, we have to figure that out. Um, but I do think it's critical that, that we. That we have a a, a seat on this committee, a meaningful seat on this committee.
Okay, it's Kim, I have a question, not just for you, but for everyone, so how do you get the town council member to vote? In knowing that they're representing all town council, if a vote comes up, if they haven't. Asked town council, how does, how does that work? You've got one person that's voting for town council, but town council's twelve people. And they was planning and voting, and so to me, it creates an issue with how they represent their committee if they're a full voting member.
And this is Rita, I I I I really applaud where you're coming from, Hillary, I just think about what you said, Steve, which is, I mean, it's hard enough, so. It's a big enough time commitment to do town council. If you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, especially during budget season, but then ask that person to be involved in this fully. I think that's really difficult, that's it's a difficult person to find. Um, and also, I I I agree with your point, um, is that person then. Has that the shoulders of all the town council members on them, or would if they don't agree with all the town council members, so I think it can get problematic.
You can, you can always have that person abstain from a vote. They're just bringing the recommendation, good or bad, and that person can abstain. But we had Steve Carl and Mark Brimsy representing and being on the um, not on the board, but on the committee to build the library. And they didn't. Um. They voted on whatever needed to be voted, there was no exceptions. And there was no comment by the members that it was biased or anything.
You know. If we. If this is gonna work, we're gonna have to have a hell of a lot of talent, Boris Leffin's gonna have to do a great job finding the right people to be on this. Um, I can't imagine if somebody from Plank, if Krista Nielsen. Came to Boris Leffin and said, I wanna be on this committee. You know, what, how 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 would you say no, right, but but to say that there has to be a Krista Nielsen. Is maybe unnecessary, because maybe the, if the focus is on getting the best, most productive talent. You know, we don't need the constraints, and I agree with Kevin, it's not about voting, really, when you think about it, it's really about work, it's doing work.
Yeah, yeah, how many times you could vote anyway, what I think, what would you be voting, if you're voting on something that requires. Funding, it's gonna have to come to the town council anyway, so I I I don't, I. I think we're overthinking it.
I, this is him, I I think it's such a hot. Issue in town that I do think there will be votes, I mean, like, if you're gonna vote on, say you're gonna vote on, you wanna develop uh, the lumberyard lot. And that has to come out of the committee, of course, there's gonna be a vote, there's gonna be a really tense vote for the town, so I think voting. Is super important to even bring it out of committee. And then other people, other bodies have to agree with it, but I I think voting is gonna be important.
So speaking of voting. Who who thinks that we should just say? Seven members and do it the normal way without designating where the members come from? Raise your hand.
And I'm intrigued, I I I don't, I don't think it's this, but I I think you can put some loose parameters. Because I do like the idea of having people who aren't on voting, I would say there should be a minimum number of people who aren't. Like, just to have that, but I wouldn't necessarily say it's gotta be one from planning, zoning, one from, I I'd say. We want the best people who are the most qualified for this committee, and it would be great if several of them are just are not on. Any boards right now, that's how I would suggest it, but.
We have to be specific, how many?
The exact number?
How many people not on boards are you at the beginning?
Um, I think three is a fine number.
It's not large enough.
What about three and two alternates, what, why would the two alternates not be the?
It's the amount of work that this committee will be.
No, 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 that's only the people that are not currently serving on other board. That's just, that's the three. Members of the pub, residents who aren't serving on other boards, and then we have two alternates.
But we can say, I'm not saying one of these other members have to, I'd say just at least three shouldn't be on a board. We may decide it should be four or five that are on a board, because they're the best people, um, but I wouldn't say it's nothing, like, I'd rather not be everybody on a board, that's why I say at least three.
No, of course, no, I think that that's, but I think it'd be a real mistake not to. Specify, I think, at least three who are not serving on boards, I do think it's a big mistake not to have people from. Each of the other boards, I think there's a. The institutional knowledge about knowing what funding might be available, what the budget looks like, what the budget process is like, what planning and zoning looks at, what land is there. That kind of institutional knowledge, I think is critical, and not having to like reinvent the wheel, and having somebody from housing authority who knows. This inside and out. I I just think that that. Create, if we don't have that sort of institutional knowledge, I just feel like we're starting behind. The eight ball, like, why would we not use that knowledge base that we have already existing on these boards? And have that synergy. And not start from there, I just feel like that would be a huge mistake.
I think we can still get that knowledge without them being on the committee, I mean, like, we get knowledge from different people in the town, on town council, they come in and. Talk to us, but I think um, you don't have to um, have them be actually on the committee.
Well, why don't we ask people on those boards, if there's somebody who's willing to serve, don't worry about their time. I don't, I'm not, I don't need to count somebody's time, if there's somebody on each board who's willing to sit on this committee. What are we worried about?
Well, maybe, maybe the head of each board would have the ability, if they choose, to designate a person. For this committee, but they don't have to, they're not forcing, Steve, the same, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think, I just want, I I get your point, we should, we don't want, we wanna have that, that expertise. I just, I I guess I'm sort of thinking about five or ten years or fifteen years beyond, like, to to specify that it has to be these things, like. If there's a person that we feel is, would be great, that's on town council, that has that knowledge, then bring them on, then they should be there, I guess. For me, it's the best people. Period, and that can include people that have that knowledge, right, then bring them up. Um, I just felt like the idea of handicapping us, or or hands, or handcapping us to say it has to be one member of each of these votes. Um. It might be, but we might decide that that is the best recipe for success, especially in the beginning.
Well, why, why don't we ask, why don't we put in there that it's one member of P and Z or their recommendation, like. What if no one wants to do it on P and Z? But they have someone in mind?
Yes. Each department can recommend.
We know there's somebody on planning and zoning that he wants to be on this committee, hey guys, real quick, sorry, um, Kevin's gotta go to board of finance for the five of seven. Um, we should ask him before he leaves about utilities, if he had any comment before he goes.
Yeah, right.
He won't be here.
But you're black, the entire. You're like it for the existing, I like it better than the existing. Well, I would hope so.
But enough said, I'm gonna endorse the lead. I think it's it's a better framework. And over time, you know, I I I I wouldn't urge you though to get the tiger, and to. Um, to understand the utility of it.
Well, I think the committee should do that, the commission should get the input from, and work with Tiger and and uh.
Well, but I, I think.
But how would that, how would that discussion pass to their clients? Okay, yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, I'm experienced, a little bit of the utility, which we're gonna continue to do, and uh. But actually, to some extent. The old charter of handling complaints and representing ourselves is really. What the SAP does, and you've taken that out of what you're promoting to some extent, so.
Not precluding it, not including, I just, I just don't think we should lead with handling complaints.
Alright, thank you.
But for Kevin Lee, could we put something in there that they need to get a report on what you guys are doing at SAP?
That's Tiger.
Okay. Alright.
But I I I think you should get Tiger's comments. For example, we were, I mean, we run this sort of. You know, I'm not sure you wanna regulate, that would one of Tiger's concerns, you know, he he doesn't want. Anyway, WPCA actually runs this sort of, so.
Yeah, well, and that thing I would comment, this is Kim, about the definition of utility that it's company. That we regulate the store, that it should be an entity or organization.
That's fine, let's come back to this. So. So I would like to come back to this thing, that we would give. The chairman of the town council, for example, the ability, put somebody on if he so chooses, to recommend someone.
Well, I I just think, and this is Steve, I think to Hillary's point, when we start, in the perfect world. We would have this set up exactly the way that the outline to begin with. And then two years down the road, as this thing gets off the ground, really gets moving. You transition away from the guideline of have to have these folks on there, if there's other folks that can serve, you know, but in the beginning. That meeting we had was powerful stuff, and 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 I, you know, and Hillary said, I said, in that meeting, you had all the stakeholders in one room. And everybody was adding to the conversation, that was amazing, I mean, it was really well done, so. If you can recreate that on a monthly basis, imagine what we can do, you know, that's, that's really what we wanna get done here, so. Um, I don't know.
Example would be, we don't want. The housing authority to think. The the real word is being done elsewhere.
No.
We we want this to be the place those conversations occur.
Right, and I specifically said to Scott, as before we even started, this is not a replacement for you guys, I mean, this is something that's gonna help. This is something, this is an asset. That they, that the, that his committee can use and lean into and lean on, and you know, I I view it as a really, really good source for them, and that's why. One person from that should be on here, for sure, I mean, you have to have one of those folks on here, and Scott, Scott, see. As this thing gets off the ground, would be the perfect person, you know, why don't we do this, we're not gonna ask. Housing authority, because we need one of them, right, I don't have to ask planning and zoning, because I already know they wanna put somebody here, why don't we just ask Steve? And um. And the head of work, Todd, do you have a problem that, you know, that tiny company, yeah, yeah. But when we write the guidelines, that's what I worry about, is we're writing the, you know, it's. That's the issue, is how do you get this committee off the ground? But not tie it up, you know, forever.
Cause I, cause I agree with everything you said, and I, that's what, and that's what I was trying to say, like, if we think that to start this makes sense, then we'll do, let's do that. Let's do it, but I don't know if I would wanna put it in stone, that's what.
Well, and you, and the way you write it is to, the the formation of this committee, the member. Or it needs to be reviewed by by laws and ordinances in two years, or something, there's gotta be a little.
Can I do that, something, Steve, this is Kim, can you just put after twenty twenty-five, the composition of the committee that first selectman?
How about after we achieve the next moratorium, why don't we get? Like. What if we didn't? After, I mean, I think two years, we're barely gonna get off the ground, I, to be honest.
Well, if those people wanna continue to serve, they would say.
Okay, never mind.
But it would not require them to be from those bodies.
Oh, yeah, because the requirement is the more, I do not that, not that, not that the spirit of this, because I think to Hillary's point, it does make sense. Especially the starting.
Yeah.
So, let's, we'll, we'll come back to the alternate issue in a second, but uh. So four designated, three undesigned, is that basically what we're saying, or should it be four and? Five?
Maybe we should, I I'm favorite five, just because of the fresh creative ideas, but I I.
What about at least three and no more than five? Why don't we see what the demand is from the public, at least three and no more than five?
And Kevin needs, Boris Leffin needs to know how many people to assign.
Okay.
I would say five, and let's see if we can fill it and how it goes.
It's a lot of work, so, you know, I don't, I think airing on the side of a couple more if they're.
Right, yeah, yeah, so was, I guess, I'm gonna put a top on it, right, I just put a bottom, like, at least three, because it'd be. Do we have to pay that number?
I think we do. So.
I just wanna be little, we're gonna run so little again, and then maybe a hundred different.
So are you saying, are you, so are we hearing at least? Are you saying, are you saying at least five, no less than three, or something?
Yeah, no, I'm saying at least three. And what's it, we have the total, we're saying the total's seven, right, and we're saying we're having at least three non-board members, it could be. Five, it could be six, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be an even number, so you gotta.
Okay, no, I'm saying in terms of just the non-board.
Oh, I see.
Just that.
This is, this is Kim, I mean, with boards that don't have all those slots filled, but it's aspirational to have five residents in New Canaan. On the, so it defines what people like, I think it's better to define that rather than say at least three, because if they can't fill it, then they'll just be vacancies. Then the people can always come on to, rather than just something that at least.
If you don't say at least three, then they can say, oh, then they're all working, like, you have to say.
We're not gonna agree, I mean, so just move to the.
Just pick a number, because it depends, it matters for quorum purposes, and it. It matters for voting purposes, if we don't have an, if it ends up being an even number, so I think we just need to have a hard number.
Yeah, I'm sorry, are we debating, uh, uh, so, are we debating the total number, or just the?
Well, it matters, it it does matter, because if we have four from boards, then if you say four, then you have eight. And then Kevin's the tiebreaker, so.
Yeah, yeah, I thought we were gonna establish what the total number is.
Yeah, so it's, so Hillary, to be clear, we, I think we're in agreement that one, two, four is gonna stay, and we're just discussing five. Number, number five, whether it's three or five, those are choices.
I thought, but I think if you say at least three, that's inex, inexact, because it could be four, and then that's a problem. So I think we need to be specific on the number.
Yeah, so the question is really.
It needs to be a odd number.
Three or five is really, really the question. And we, and we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote, and we may have, guys, we may have the same debate, and the night we, you know, at the town, at the county meeting. You know, this could all, so the question is.
Steve, Tom, just one second, why don't you say four and five with one being an alternate?
If they don't show up, you'll have a tie, you can vote.
I I think, I think the concept of alternate, it's just my, off top my head. It it's it's a, a formality that, that the two bodies that use that. Have demonstrated the importance and the utility of that, because they make so many decisions every time they meet. I mean, ten decisions a night, man, and they can't be shortened, it's not a, it's not a possibility. This isn't so much a voting board, is is as a working board, a consensus building board, a recommending board, I don't, I don't think. The concept of an alternative is.
Right, because think about what Kevin said, there is another group in this town that deals with. With fun, with, well, not only funding, but housing, the housing authority, to say that they're gonna be voting on on something. It it's, we're, well, we can agree about this, let's should, let's should get the best individual intent.
Here's a practical thought, if we're saying really that the four people are gonna be on boards, they're gonna not have a lot of time, you need. You need a good amount of people, then we're gonna do the work, maybe three is enough, maybe you need five, just, just for a practical purpose, you need five.
Okay, I'm naming, I'm naming five, I'll go with five.
I'm five, I'll be five, five.
Just a number, maybe.
I know, exactly, and and we. We may be. What do you think?
It's five total?
No, no, the five non-board members.
I agree with five.
Okay, and Hillary, do you wanna make the case for alternates, Hillary, or have I convinced you?
I don't think we need alternates, I think that that's for when you have to make a decision under statute, which we don't have here.
Okay, I mean, nine, nine member board is a nice set of, nice size, that they grow up, yeah. Good, good board, good size.
This is Kim, I just have one thing to add, and I promise I'm not gonna keep talking about this, that we have a designated chair or secretary to take minutes.
I don't think we need to say that here.
I looked through, I looked through the other ordinances, and it had, it definitely had that someone was in charge. They designated the secretary to take minutes, and they defined, sorry. They designated the secretary to take minutes, and they defined, sorry, the minutes, guys, that they defined the minutes, order, and all those kinds of things.
Well.
But that was, the part of the committee is to be open and transparent, and either that's kind of. Embedded in the purpose of the committee, but I think it was said in other um, ordinances.
I got just the language, I'll show you next time. Okay. Is it okay if we move over to uh, utilities? I'm gonna try to press the magic button. Say goodbye, just in case. Bye, bye, everybody. Just sharing a different.
Oh.
Yeah, we've got both for you, this uh. This was Doc's others, we actually have, we wanna continue. Oh my God, this is never simple.
I'm not gonna. Kevin's, Kevin's points are interesting, because they do. We're dealing with electricity, gas. And these are regulated utilities and. You know, I, I, I think the reason that we're here with this, Tommy, because we're talking about town property and, and. And cell towers, and that is a. And and that's why. This one is great. This one's interesting.
Well, what about serving, you know, town property for charging stations? What about, and I'm, I'm a big part of.
I agree, because this is why I wonder, this is why Kevin brought up dealing with a gas and utility and a power utility. Public's like, okay, I'm getting those. This is very different than building a cell tower, we're charging the station, we can make cost tax.
That can be anything, like, and I'm a big part of burying the lines, and I know.
Very expensive, but you know what?
So is maintaining.
The town is. The town's not created with utility.
But, yeah.
I just need to point out for background purposes that. The only other town that I could find that had anything like this concept we're discussing is Will. Um, this, I couldn't find any other town that did anything nearly comparable. None of them have this universal mandate that we're gonna make the world better. All the other towns that have utilities commissions, they, they, most of them have their own, literally, electric companies. Generating their own power. They have gas, they have sewer, they're focusing. It's more of an oversight. To exist, to operating entities, that's the function they have. The only other town that I could find that has anything near what we were thinking is Will, and yes. They're talking about, you know, charging stations. But that gets back to the whole thing is, I, I think it'd be great to have somebody sit around talking about charging stations. But the, the reason we're doing utilities commission right now has to do with telecommunications.
It's private property.
Right now.
Town property.
On town property.
On town property. And dealing with electricity and water is good luck. I mean, I, I don't. I don't think the town council wants to get involved in that. And that's not, shouldn't be our.
Well, well, I think, is it, what was it, you know, they're defining um. What, what, how we should measure our carbon footprint.
Yeah.
These are good things. No, no, I, I don't, but I, I.
But, you know, so if you're gonna, that's not what, if you're gonna, why, we're gonna hear is very.
If you're gonna come up with a telecommunications strategy.
Right.
You need to keep your focus. You can't be doing everything else while you're doing that.
But I, I wanna ask more question, but this committee existed before this issue came out, so why do you think it was, and I'm not trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I.
I'm just curious, why do you think it existed? I think part of the reason, I'm just gonna answer it, just. That I wanna hear your answer, is because of public transparency, so that people know what's going on with utilities. It has, because otherwise people, that's not, have not had a forum to understand what's happening. But I, I was just curious to your.
Again. In, in the case of the utility commission in the past, I think. If you look at what part of that group we're now looking back on, it's around the development of the telecommunications plan. Which is a. Not a publicly, it's not regulated, it's a, you have private companies looking to. Well, not private, but pu- public companies looking to. You know, put structures in towns. This, it's, I just think it's a little different than the sewer lines, the electric, the electrical lines. Um. I mean, to let people know that the road's gonna be chewed up, because, you know, everyone's dealing, their quarry is doing water is. Very different than what. The reason why we're here is because. Someone wants to put a cell tower on school property, and that is very different than my utility. At my house.
So you're suggesting that, are you suggesting they should only hear that presentation?
No, but, no, and, and I don't even have an answer to Kim's question. The, the transparency I'm all for, but I think. We need to uh, understand. The differences in all these utilities, because I think they're very different, and. The interaction that Tiger has, because it impacts what Tiger's doing, is very different than. So, yeah, so it's, it's the check and balances that occur. So the day-to-day utilities that we, that. Power outages, the sewer lines, that water, that, and all that stuff, that's not what these folks are doing. I mean, this, this is big pictures.
Yeah.
You know, and right, and that's the difference between saying, that, you know. Where the public has a chance to weigh in at a utilities meeting and say, what are you guys doing? You know, how are you making our solar, you know, energy better? How are you, what are you doing to make town greener? And, you know, the questions that can be asked in a forum like that. It is, right, it is, but also, should we own our own, sort of, should we own that? These are. Yeah, I think that commission should deal with. Should we own our own? Source system. I'm not sure that the uh. That, to me, is, is an issue that, you know, I'd like to talk about, and putting towers on. On school property, I mean, yeah, that's, these are heated issues, but I'm not sure. Electricity is electricity. I mean, if we can sit here and complain about the rates, we could just complain about the weather not being out and how quick. I, I think, I don't, I don't, I don't know it, but that's giving them the ability to do, you know, that's, that's not what. I don't think anything's gonna change, but if they wanted to, they wanted to tackle a problem like that. I just don't, I, I, I really, I, I just don't think that this committee will have the ability to tackle that.
Well, I also don't think it's gonna be all at once. Like, I think it's great to have this sort of structure in place, but I don't think we're gonna have to deal with water. And, and all at once. I think there are gonna be, like, big issues that come, like, kind of one at a time or two at a time. And I think it's great to have something structured in place to be able to deal with those. Things that come up from oversight perspective, like governance perspective, not for. You know, like taking complaints, or like, like it originally said, because that got into the nitty-gritty. Um, Christina also.
Christina, before, before we start, let me just say that on the second page of the draft. What I say is commencing. Out of the gate. It's telecommunications, right? Uh, identifying um. Gaps and inadequacies and then suggesting solutions. And I would say additional areas of focus for the commission. May be specified from time to time by the board of selectmen, and I would say, and the town, or the town council. So it's just a matter of, you know, what's my stuff, what, what, what's my assignment? For the first, and it would take this group probably a year. To, to get really their arms around telecommunications strategy, it took, 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 something like four years. To do that, so all I'm suggesting is out of the gate, get this right. I haven't, I haven't restricted the definition of utility to try to take things off the table, because who knows what might happen. But, but all I'm saying is, out of the gate, let's do this well.
Yeah.
Christina?
I just wanted to say that, you know, our energy sources are constantly changing. And as we get into another phase, I mean, we didn't have cell phones back in nineteen ninety-one, and we had the beginnings of the internet. We don't know what's gonna come next. So to leave it wide enough so that that commission or committee can. De- de- deal and dig into it, I think it's essential. Um, there's no crime in putting something like gas down, but gas was a big issue for us five years ago. Or eight years ago, and behind, we couldn't negotiate, we couldn't get to a final. Agreement to have the gas line brought into New Canaan. We still have a very large swath of New Canaan that doesn't have gas. Will that be an issue in the future? Maybe. Will the telephone company decide to bury the wires? And is that gonna be an issue? Who's gonna keep? The meetings open to allow the transparency and conversation and the residents' input to come into play. I think that narrowing it down to one or two things doesn't serve any purpose. But leaving it open, as issues arise, this committee. Or commission will be able to address them, and to keep the public informed, which is. After all, all we're looking for, transparency and information and people's input.
Yeah, and, and just to piggyback on that, I think maybe they're gonna be helping to decide what is the priority, right? Like, among those things, um, should we be thinking about? Uh, you know, telecommunications now, should we be putting water on our horrific, on our radar? That it's gonna be coming soon until I kind of prepare for that. Are we kind of thinking ahead to, like, the next issue that we're gonna have to deal with from a utility perspective? So I, I agree completely with what Christina just said.
This is, Kim, Chris, are you suggesting that we take out B? On, on Tom's draft, and we just take that out altogether about telecommunications? Or I, I'm just trying to understand where, where you're coming from.
No, it has to stay. We have to add water. And perhaps even maybe generators as we. Place more generators in town properties. Just leave it as, as wide as possible. After all, no one's going to bring up a topic that the board of selectmen doesn't want. You know. To be discussed because of whatever reason, but. I think the more we put into this and cover. Um, the more transparency we'll create for everybody.
I mean, we get how well generators, but that would be, I mean, we're. Some towns do that, Scottville doesn't want a generator. Yeah, that's. But, I mean, again, under the umbrella of utility, that is valid, right?
I have a question. It's not. I could go in the way of this, I guess, but it's not clear to me. That we wanna hand. To a committee. The, the ability to basically. Create any issue with any utility, water, gas, energy, everything? That they can do whatever, you know, the, if, if I'm chairing this, I, I wanna have a sense of. You know, what's my, what's my mission here?
Right, which is.
What am I, what are you, what am I gonna be?
But Tom, this is a new, the, the Utilities Commission existed for many years. The unfortunate part is that it's gone dormant twice. In the lifetime that I lived in New Canaan in thirty-plus years. So. They dealt with issues as they came up.
But then, what, so the, the, the twelve dash four purpose of commission. Um, under A is what this commission does. I mean, it's, I think, right, it is very broad, yeah. It's not limiting at all. The only question is what do you defer?
Yeah.
Add water to it.
That's considered a utility, that's a utility. Could you be more specific?
So, I, I like A, um, but I don't know if we need B, because they're gonna take that B anyway. They're gonna start with, I was saying, telecommunications.
Oh, if you take away B. That you're not giving them any advice on should they prioritize their mission. You're just saying you've got, I, you know, that's the latest thing. I, I don't know, it's possible, we're gonna make a call on the. This, this latest bell tower before these people ever get off the ground. And so I don't know when the next.
Right, we can't control private. Residents from, I, there's just, the. Unfortunately, we have one issue in front of us that we need to just deal with, plus, and then this feels a whole lot easier to do. And I think the, the issue, what I'm struggling with right now is that ultimately if we go on something right now, no one feels good about it. And I don't think this is gonna help us feel good about it, because like you said, it's not going to be there by the time we need to deal with it. And, and then after that, this looks great, and A looks great, and looking at transparency and all that, it's great after that.
Do you think after the monopower, I have any other shape of problem?
You're gonna, but I don't know how we're gonna be able to deal with it if it's. Put on private property. Don't know.
Right, but if there's another.
I think we've, they've proposed other towns and lands with cell towers on, but what if the next one comes up to go on another town? Piece of land, but I think that we're not all operating from the same basis of information. What is the, what is the APNT coverage in town? What is the Horizon coverage in town? So we don't know that, and that's not, we're pretty transparent. We had a town council meeting and people were still. We were all confused about the baseline. So I see the committee as being able to establish a baseline for any utility. And if someone says we have to, you know, privatize the wastewater treatment plant. If we don't know what kind of stats we're dealing with, what the baseline is, then how can we make a preference?
I agree with all that. I unfortunately believe that this one issue is in our way. We need to get back to it. But, you know, this allows, the staff re-establishing this allows us to, to. Say that we want a more robust approach in the future, which is why I would right now vote against any cell tower in public property. Because I don't have enough information. Why don't we, the town council, just deal with that, and reason we're here tonight is. I think that's the elephant in the room, though. Get language, get language together so we can bring it up to the council as quickly as possible. And we promised that we would get this going.
Yeah.
Well, up, up until then, we say we're not voting on anything with, on, 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 without a recommendation from the utilities. Yeah, so it's saying that to the. We're, we're trying to, you know, be the big boy in the room here and say, hey, let's, let's get this thing reestablished. For, for the benefit of everybody, we need to do this. We just heard the first one say. Language looks good, you know, that was really encouraging, that he read this, that, hey, this looks good, you know, I. I was, I agree, I agree with all of it. I hadn't heard it, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'm willing, by the way, to. To take the teeth out of B, maybe it should just be there as one of the things you do, but.
I mean, I think that's kind of obvious.
Without closing off or that.
Yes.
The other options, I find.
When they get recruited for the K, each other, right?
But let's, let's, let's address the elephant in the room eventually.
If we have to do that.
Well, we will, I think.
I agree.
During, during the approval process of this. And utilities commission, I, I would fully expect that there are four people on this council who will use the opportunity. To send a message, whatever message they wanna send. You know, this will be the time, I mean, I'd like to see us vote this end, but in the process, if you wanna say something about an existing. You know, or, and I'm, I mean, I think, I mean, it's great, and the transparency and everything, dealing with all the utilities. If, if someone gets their arms around that, that, that's great.
Well, and the other thing too is, because one of the issues we have right now is that we're not seeing the information that we think is important to see. And A Utility Commission could have been the person or the people that were identifying consultants that we needed. Identifying the organizations that could be bringing us that information. That could be true for any utility or any issue we have related to utilities. They don't necessarily have to be the expert, but they have to be asking, who is the expert for water? Who is the expert for whatever that we could bring on? That could then inform us, and then we can inform, and make an informed decision, so.
Hey, guys, I've got a, so why don't we, why don't you delete B? The text of B and just make B. Um. The Board of Selectmen. And or Town Council. May identify areas of focus for the commission to focus on, or, you know, something along those lines. So that it gives us and the Board of Selectmen the power. When we feel like we need to, to direct their focus. So we can, we could vote on this ordinance, and at the same meeting that we effectuate this. Say, the first thing we want, we want you guys to focus on is cell towers in New Canaan. So instead of. So instead of putting that in the ordinance, we just say for B. You know. That the Board of Selectmen and Town Council. Um, may identify areas of focus for the commission. May identify specific areas of focus for the commission. To prioritize.
Hillary, this is Kim. I, I think that I like taking out B and adding that. And my other suggestion is there a way for the public. To direct the Utilities Commission through some process, so it's not just. The Board of Selectmen and the Town Council.
Well, they could do it through us, because we're their elected officials. You know, like.
They're really caring about this, and you bring it up for a meeting, and you're like, yeah, we should definitely do that.
But if we don't all agree, I don't know. It just seems like there should be a form and be helped to be able to raise an issue if they have enough people.
So these meetings and the path of it.
Yeah.
And Hillary, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. I think that's, that's a good way to approach it. As usual, you wrapped up a long conversation with the right words, so thank you.
All right, I just, I think that's, I think we all agree on why we're doing this, so we don't need to belabor that point. But I think that there's a really, I don't think we have to spell out. Like the elephant in the room necessarily in this ordinance if we want it to be general enough, but I think if we give. Us and the Board of Selectmen the power to sort of direct the conversation a bit. Um, then that we can do that and we can charge them with what we think. You know, and as the representative, you know, we're, we're elected to represent the residents and I think we have a pretty good. Handle on the pulse of what's going on. I think. We know what's going on. And we know what they, what's, what the controversy is right now and why we're doing this uh at present. So I think we can be entrusted with that too.
Yeah, and and I think I feel really confident to your point, Steve, and your point, Kim. I mean, the public can bring their concerns to utilities commission and that. That's another venue if we're, if we're missing it for some reason, that they have that ability.
Uh, hands are raised. Maria. So you just, oh, yeah, Chris, Christina, do you have more? Your hand is up, you're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to reinforce that I think water should be added to paragraph one.
I agree.
And instead of trash, use the word refuse.
Okay. How about swat shop?
I was, I was just going to agree with you, Christina, that water should be added. And under B, I thought. Maybe you don't have to take out all of B, just one, B one. Because that's a hyper focus on telecommunications, so this commission would assess. Uh. Infrastructure in town and then two, seek input, three, recommend. So I don't know if you have to take out all of B, just maybe make it more general.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yep.
So I hate to drag you guys back to. This subject is just, it's not conceptual really. Do we, do we need to talk about? I guess the point I got from Kevin is maybe that by charter, he's ex officio on every.
Yes.
So can we talk about ex officio here? Um, or do we have to? It should be in there.
I think it should be.
Okay, um, so react to the second sentence because it's. It's an innovation. In C, twelve point, twelve dash three C.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, you want another board of selection? Is that well, is that, I don't know if that's a legal move. I don't know. I I I would love to see that on every, I mean, that's perfect on every commission, but. By charter, the first selectman is ex officio. I don't know whether you can designate someone else. That's. In addition to him, yeah. But I I'm, it's, it's new, it's new territory. Yes, I'm a little nervous about. Because as I said, and I have to disagree with my respected first election, but ex officio in common usage. Impplies voting as well as that you're representing another body. And so what I'm, what what we, what we're doing, and I was somehow thinking that ex officio was not voted because typically. Kevin doesn't exercise voting. Well, but the time breaking is actually specified in the charter.
He doesn't vote otherwise.
When otherwise not specified, he doesn't vote.
No, he doesn't vote. Ex officio means that the only responsibility he or she has is to break the vote. That's it.
I'm sorry, that's wrong. Uh, looked it up today, six places. Six places I looked it up. Uh, it may be defined in our charter differently, but I doubt it.
I I thought the only reason he couldn't vote on the Board of Finance is because he's not, um, he doesn't own property here anymore. I thought that was the reason.
He owns property.
No, he rents, he, he's at the. I thought that was the reason, I, because he sold his home, he sold his home.
No, he bought a condo.
When we rewrote the rules of Board of Finance, the the first election used to be the Chair of the Board of Finance. And we put that up for a vote and and now. He's not anymore, so and and because it's, because it's an existing. Board or committee or commission, he's automatically ex officio of that.
Somebody on Board of Finance told me that. That's so funny.
It's a chart, it was a charter change.
Right.
Not that long ago, ten years.
All attorneys, do we get a legal opinion on this before we draft?
Remember, the point. The question is not Kevin. I'm fine having Kevin be ex officio, whether that's voting or not, I don't wanna go there. Leave it alone. Kevin is what Kevin is.
And by the way, I'm saying this the first elec- first election.
You're asking, should we have five members?
No, he's asking about the second Board of Selectmen and they also designate. That's why Steve brought up a good point. He doesn't know if it's in the charter or legal, so I'm suggesting we get a legal opinion. Either take it out or get a legal opinion on it.
I don't know if this is right, I I'm literally disgraced. Uh, for the affordable housing, for instance, I know that Kathleen had expertise in that area. Did it come from that so that you could use her? I don't know.
The reason, I think we pick it up. The reason this was put in here is exactly that, that that Kathleen Corbett had a special interest. And we were thinking.
An expertise.
But not an expertise, not in utilities, it was actually in the. Well, we were thinking about her passion for making the revitalizing utilities commission. And and so, and and but in both cases, it was about Kathleen. But but when we were talking, when Hillary and I were talking about this, I was thinking it was a non-voting member. And now I'm saying you can have five members and you're gonna have two.
Yeah.
Potentially, and so can we just leave alone the other? Selectmen and just leave it Kevin? Is that okay?
It's neater that way, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's neater.
Hillary, you okay with that?
Can she come to public comment and talk?
Of course, and it's not, again, it's not.
I like the concept of the first election saying, I I am up to here, please, you or you go. And you're the, you're the liaison for you, you're the liaison for, you know, uh, affordable housing. A different management style may do that. Um, currently, management doesn't do that. With another click down the road, maybe somebody decides, hey. That's the way you won't wanna do it.
But can we do that? No, I don't mean that.
You could basically create liaison, absolutely.
Yeah, like.
Specific people that Kevin's got. Just the first election, say someone on it. Uh, do we have to put it in there to say that they may designate someone? Could they do that anyway without it being in there?
Well, this says.
That's my question.
Designating that Board of Selectmen person as an ex officio member.
Specifically as that.
That's what this language says, and I'm, or take that out. I thought it's, we haven't thought it through carefully enough. I don't think it's ready for primetime.
Could you take the ex officio? To do it that way? So that takes the ugliness out of the.
If you feel you need language to accomplish that. You really don't like which the conference, which you just said.
Um, no, but it opens up a suggestion that you could. If you wanted to.
If you like it, I don't.
It's gotta make it past twelve people, because somebody that night may strike that and that happens all the time. We, we, the subcommittee, which I'm ex officio of the subcommittee. Uh, moves it to the town council and the town council then takes up this language. We, we know, this is what we, what we vote on in the committee. You know, Mike's not here and Luke's not here and, you know, Penny was here earlier. Everybody will look at this and that night, some people may wait and say, I don't like that, you know, I wanna put that to vote.
I kind of see this as being something for the charter rather than for us to decide, because I don't think that this is ever gonna happen.
No, but the, what's on the floor now is do we simply say? That the first election can designate another member of the Board of Selectmen as a liaison.
Yeah, that's not, that's.
Harmless, it's not, doesn't raise any legal issues.
The only thing that I'm curious about is, does it matter, like, and I'm not suggesting that it should go one way or the other, but there's like two parties, only two other. Parties of the selection, so is that gonna make a? I don't know, like, and that could bring up issues for.
So why don't we just strike it? This isn't worth it now, less. Okay. Um, all right, so. So I can, I can ref- put a dra- draft together of each of these and recirculate. Um, I'll send you one of these, because I didn't get these out in two days.
I mean, is there, is there a, I guess the next step is the subcommittee should, we meet one more time.
Okay.
And make sure that it's good to go green lighted. You gotta vote on it.
Right, sucker.
You gotta vote, say, let's pass on.
Right.
Then both of these come up and we have to put on the agenda. We could have them on as early as our February meeting, but great.
I'm trying to make a suggestion if one's ready beforehand, let's just do it. Like if utility seems to be an easier route, like if we can get that done quicker, I wouldn't come on the same path.
Couldn't we do it the twenty fifth?
And you're giving me. I'm giving you a hard time. Because I don't, I don't see the difference between a road and trash lawn or. The power.
Okay.
I I'm just saying.
No, I mean, let's put it in there. I can't argue with you. I'm just, you know.
So it does illustrate. So here's the difference because you, again. You cannot control. Our. You can control how much we budget to improve our roads.
But 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 you, there's no commission telling Tiger, hey, we think our roads should actually, we should spend more money on a road.
You know what? This is becoming, this is becoming the committee to attack, establish transparency for all matters before the town. I'm putting it in there, man, I just. Roads, I mean, only because I.
So can we get, guys, let me get back to Kim's point about can't we get this done on the twenty fifth of January? So, so here's the, I think, I believe the cadence for this will be. Affirmable by the subcommittee, then it has to be noticed, publicly noticed in two publications. So the notice that happened. It goes in writing, um, and then the box that they're checked as far as publicly noted, then we can actually vote on it, so.
How much notice is needed?
It's two weeks. I, or I think.
So again, if one is, if if utilities is ready for grant, can we expedite that one or do that? Or like someone's saying, we have to be together.
They don't have to be together, but it happens that we could make it together and to me it would be less work to make them together.
And and by the way. Christina, I've already drafted. The, uh, I did it today, drafted a provision that says the town council has to approve property sales. And so, and that's not controversial. You can read it in thirty seconds. So I'm.
I didn't see it. Can you send it?
No, because I didn't type it yet.
Oh.
I wrote on the yellow pad, they call it, it's gonna be called instead of balking and then the butter. But you'll have it in two days and I think we can wrap it in and at least try to get all three in there and get them all done. Um, that one is not gonna slow us down, trust me, that.
Are we gonna discuss this on the twenty fifth or tomorrow?
No, we need another sub, we need another committee meeting.
Okay.
Not tomorrow, it's not on the agenda for tomorrow.
Correct.
I think, I thought it was two days or two weeks, but it's, it's a good cycle, there's word.
Maria, Maria, do you know the public notice requirements for the ordinance?
No, actually I don't. I'd have to look it up, but wasn't it, um. Well, that was, I'm thinking about the leasing public property. It was different. I definitely have to look it up.
I can't read it the way Tucker does. She, she manages to do this more quickly than I thought. She told me, I'm right down the hall.
Do we have any public comments before we?
Yeah, we should.
Get to.
Uh, we have seven participants. Frankly, I wouldn't know how to get them on.
Tom, we need to take down this document.
I don't know how to do that. Well.
No, hold on a second, guys. So under the charter. You need, uh, it has to be, notice has to be published once a week for two successive weeks. Together with posting of the warning of the meeting of the town council, which is to act upon the ordinance.
February meeting unless we have a special meeting today.
Yeah.
All we need to decide tonight is what our next committee meeting is.
Yes, but we should make sure that it's, well, it's at least two weeks in advance of our February meeting. And that we vote on these to advance.
I can do it in two days, so as quickly as you guys can tech, can give me a date, we can do it. Fast, fast, fast.
Oh, it's the twenty second. Oh, no, the third Wednesday is the fifteenth. So we have to have it noticed by February first.
So. Twenty fifth, the subcommittee meets on twenty. Before the first, we didn't meet right before our, we're getting ready.
That's at six o'clock.
Tomorrow?
Oh, tomorrow, or the twenty fifth. It's the twenty fifth we can meet, we're meeting at six o'clock, so we have.
We're starting at six anyway.
We have to meet at five.
So I guess we can't figure this out now. I doubt it. Okay. So.
And that meeting that night, let's, let's look at the end of that meeting, so from six to seven are public hearing. And then from seven to eight, we have two other things on the agenda, real estate stuff. So if we can get through that by eight. Great schedule, the subcommittee to be active.
Yeah.
You know, do it that way, that would be better, and then we, you know. And we, we. You know, we'll keep, hopefully we'll be here till midnight.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna take the, uh, over. Are you guys okay with that out there?
Uh, we would, we would handle this after the twenty fifth meeting.
Yeah.
Once we conclude the public hearing and the. That's, yeah, we're already together, so.
Yeah.
The items on the agenda for the second part of that meeting, I mean, there, it's real estate stuff too, so. I mean, most of that, if if we, if everybody tunes in and watches the Board of Finance meeting, we'll all be able to speed on that. So, uh, it'll, it'll chew up quickly.
The Board of Finance meeting that's happening now? Yeah, no, I hear you. Um, that's fine with me. Do you know? Yeah. Go ahead, Maria, sorry.
I was just gonna say, is it a different, uh, different notification requirements if it's a new? Ordinance versus amending and existing? Cause we're, are we do, we're doing, this is. Because we're, are we do, we're doing, this is an amendment, right?
Yeah, it's the same, so it's, it's under the charter, it's C four dash ten, do you want me to read the whole, the whole thing to you real quick? It says, no, no, no ordinance shall be passed, amended, suspended, or repealed.
Uh, so it's all.
And it has the same notice requirement, so yeah, it's the same requirements.
I mean, you, you basically put a document out there, and then everyone comes in and just has a.
Yeah.
Conversation.
Right, yeah.
Hopefully we made it better, all right. Much to adjourn, could be formal for tonight?
If we all agree with that.
All right.